Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is our regular commission meeting of Wednesday, April the 4th, 2018. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar.
Thank you. Please rise. And this evening, God, let's power ahead and thank you for our daily blessings. Thank you for our first responders. Thank you for the citizens of the City of West Miami. And thank you for our elected leaders. May you always continue to be our guiding light. May you always be the light that shines humbleness amongst us. And may you continue to bless our city, day in and day out, and its elected officials. We pray for our first responders, our police officers, military personnel, and firefighters, and we ask you to return them home safely to their parents. And we ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Deputy Chief, for the pledge, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Mourinho.
Present.
Vice Mayor Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes.
Present.
Commissioner Rhonda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
Yes.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Item four, please.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for March 21st, 2018, regular City Commission meeting.
Motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Presentation of minutes for approval for March 21st, 2018, Charter Review Board Meeting.
Motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Madam Clerk, at this time, I would like to take a couple items out of order.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Starting with item 10, actually 10B.
The resolution for mitigation?
Uh, hold on, hold on, hold on.
11?
I'm sorry, 11B.
11B. Item 11B, under New Business Agenda Items, presentation of recognition to Honorable Yvonne Questa for being appointed by the Governor to serve as Circuit Court Judge of the 11th Judicial Circuit of Florida by Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you. Welcome, Judge.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Let me start by saying that I personally met Judge Questa back in 2000, I believe, 11, 12, and when she was first running for judge. And from day one, by the way, which I didn't know her story, and then, once you know her story, it's really profound. But somehow, her character, her kindness called to my attention, and then, you know, that was some years ago. As a matter of fact, Questa, I still have the invitation back in Friday, June 7, 2013, and 12, when you first came in, Judge. Then, recently, it's what really, you know, touched my heart, and people like Judge Questa need to be recognized. She has a tremendous career, and as you can see, she's very young, and but let's start by the end, which is what I know right now. She was recently appointed by Rick Scott. And to me, I mean, that is something, and I'm sure that the people here in the commission, our fellow commissioners, they all know Judge Questa and they feel the same way. So, tonight, the city is proud to honor a lady who is a living testament that you can fulfill your dreams. You can aim for the sky. Yvonne Questa came to the United States as a young lady during the Mario boat lift. She is a Cuban-American who worked hard to earn her seat on the bench, supported by her single mom. I mean, to me, she's the American dream. Yvonne Questa has been on the bench since 2012. Before that, she was the Miami-Dade Public Defender. She earned her law degree from Nova University, Shepherd Board College of Law, and her bachelor degree from Florida International University. Recently, Judge Questa was tapped by the state of Florida government, Rick Scott, as one of the few judges selected to fulfill a vacancy left by our Honorable Gisela Cardona, a former West Miami resident, for the position of Circuit Court Judge of the 11th Judicial Circuit of Florida. She was part, listen to this, she was part of a selected and elite group of judges that also include William, and you're gonna excuse me, because some of the names, I don't know how to pronounce. I'm not a judge, I'm not in that realm, so. So, William, but I know him meant a lot to a lot of people, Alfred, Alex Borkor, Tanya Brinkley, Raoul Cuervo, Ayanna Harris, Carlos Lopez, Joseph McPhiel, Spencer Molta, Luis Perez Medina, and Andrea Wilson. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor.
I would like, at this time, for my colleagues to come forward, unless you want to add something. I know Commissioner Luciano Suarez.
I want to add something, because Yvonne is like my niece, because, you know, his family is from Asturias, another part of Spain. It's the same part of Spain my family comes from, and the Vice Mayor family also. But she's, on top of everything you said, she's my favorite judge.
Thank you.
Smart, very intelligent, and, you know, everybody loves her because she's fair.
Yes.
She's strong. You see, there, she looks a young girl, but she's strong when she's there in the bench. And I congratulate you very much, and your mother, and I tell you, in the name of Coronel Matías Farias, too, I want to tell you, you know, congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, let's come forward, unless you want to say something.
Well, I do. Thank you so much. You know, Mayor, Commissioner, thank you so much for your invitation. I feel like I'm home. I want to tell you that when I first came to this country in 1980, right after the Mario boat lift, I was seven years old, I came to live here in the City of West Miami. I attended my first school here in Salvenia Heights. It was second grade, and so I have very fond memories of the City of West Miami. I live very close to the city. I, you know, I shop in the city, I come here a lot, and I'm so pleased that you're all here and that I am here tonight, and I see you all out in the community, and I'm humbled by this honor that you have bestowed upon me. Thank you so very much. Thank you.
Let me, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, may I address?
Yes.
I was a member and a chair of the Judiciary Nominating Committee. Judiciary Nominating Committee views application for judges. Judges retire, they get sick, they die, and therefore, there's a vacuum that has to be filled by someone. So, there is a methodology whereby the announcement of an opening is made, and I tell you that in my time, and I know that presently, the best of the best only apply, the best of the best. Then, that goes out to a very rigorous examination by the JNC, consisting of nine members, and those are elevated then to the Governor, which in turn, the Governor has a staff and also interviews and makes the selection. A judge not only have to know the law and the procedure to apply the law, but also have to be gentle, have to be patient, have to be nice, but we have to be firm and fair. And if we have those categories, I assure you that the judge is in the upper 0.5% of the judiciary and the lawyers of the state of Florida.
Thank you, Mr. Villalobos.
Anybody else before I go forward? Okay. Here we go.
[inaudible] [inaudible] Whereas the Mayor of the City Commission of the City of West Miami, on this great day, occasionally probably recognize the direction Yvonne Questa on her appointment by Governor Rick Scott to the 11th Judicial Circuit Court. And whereas Judge Questa has served as county court judge, Miami-Dade County since 2012, previously served in the office of Public Defender for 11th Judicial Circuit Court. And the City of West Miami, eloquent and knowledge, this great professional achievement in a effort to render to you an admiration. Judge Questa has received this high mark for being humble, fair-minded, and of her highest integrity. And Dolly will have committed to strengthening and improving our court system by granting the role of the law as judge and our state court. Therefore, being proclaimed by the local mayor, Vice Mayor Candida Blanca, Commissioner Juan Blanes, Rhonda Rodriguez, Luciano Suarez, hereby, uh, I'm sorry, Yvonne Questa, City of West Miami, and then you want to say this. [applause] Commissioner, please. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give it a second. Thank you so much. One.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to take the next item out of order, and that will be 11A.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11A, Presentation of Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Department Annual Report, Summarizing the Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Services to the City of West Miami during 2017 by Chief Dave Downey.
Chief, welcome to the city.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Manager. Again, I'm Dave Downey, your Fire Chief, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I have some colleagues here as well, Captain Jason Fernandez and Chief Jeff Suarez, as well as the one that really runs everything for me, Maria Reyes. So, appreciate them being here as well. But once again, I'm your Fire Chief, and I'm celebrating 37 years in the fire service, but I haven't forgotten that [applause] I started when I was five. Yeah. But I haven't forgotten where I came from. I spent over 20 years riding the truck, so I didn't start as the Fire Chief. I just want to remind you that Miami-Dade Fire is your full-service fire rescue department, and we operate 69 stations, over 140 units. We do that with personnel, about 2,500 personnel, 2,000 of them are firefighters. And last year, we responded to about 260,000 calls for service here in the county. So, we stay pretty busy. We're one of the 10th largest fire departments and the second largest that's fully accredited in the world. Last year, some highlights from 2017, we put on 136 more firefighters, which is important because we had some years where we couldn't hire anybody, so now we're trying to make up for some attrition and for some new service. And we put on our first non-certified class at our own fire academy since 1980. So, this was the first time we've done it since 1980. We opened a temporary facility down in Palmetto Bay, Station 62, and a rescue we put in service up in North Miami, Rescue 18. And we continue to work through our budget challenges, like everybody, but I'm here to tell you, your fire department is strong. We have a class right now of 40 firefighters in. We're hiring another class of 40 firefighters in May, another class in September. We're also putting in some new service in two weeks, another fire truck at Turnpike in 104th Street, and rescue at Port Miami to try to help us with some of the increased traffic there at Port Miami. And we've budgeted for additional service so that we can start filling in some of our gaps and making sure we cover the areas. Specific to the city, again, we've been providing service since 1981. Last year, we responded to 959 calls here in the city, and one of the important things I look at is who's responding to the calls, and 87% of them are handled by your own rescue forty or station forty. So, we know you have an engine and a rescue and seven firefighters there full-time. They're very proud to be your station, and I know they're very involved in the city, and we want to maintain that. But it's important to also know that there's six other stations within five miles of the city. So, while you might be able to take care of it with one or two units, it's nice to know you have the additional resources. And that comprises six more fire engines, four more rescues, and two chiefs. So, you've got 36 additional firefighters within five miles of the city in case we need additional service. And again, I stress that over 60% of those are paramedics. So, even though the fire truck arrives, it arrives with paramedics and the ability to give life-saving emergency medical care, just like Engine 40. Our customer satisfaction survey, again, out of a possible five, our countywide score is 4.87, and here in the city, it's 4.8, so we're doing well. And lastly, the yardstick that we're measured against, our response times, unfortunately, I can't do anything about traffic, but we do everything we can to try to minimize the time it takes for our people to get to the scene, call processing, alerting our crews and things like that. Countywide, our average is seven minutes and 42 seconds. Here in the city, it's five minutes and 46 seconds. So, we're doing very well, almost two minutes faster than we have in the rest of the county. So, again, I'm here to answer any questions. I appreciate the opportunity. I want to thank your police department. We've got a great relationship with your police department, and we're partners in public safety, and I appreciate all the support you've always lent us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Blanes, anything?
We're very fortunate to have a fire department, and especially being run by Chief Downey, you know, he does an outstanding job. The men and the women of the Miami-Dade County Fire Department are second to none. And, you know, I, when I talk to residents, you know, they have nothing but good things to say about the rescue and how they were treated and the care that they were given. It's all A-plus. So, we're very lucky, very lucky to have such a department serving us. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go into the next item, Judge Questa, you can go if you want. You can stay all night. It might be a long night, but I know you have a very busy schedule, so you're.
We always enjoy coming to the commission meetings around.
Good night, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good night, Maria.
Because I'm an elected official in Miami-Dade County, so I like to be informed of everything that happens. So, if you don't mind, I'm gonna stay a few more minutes.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
And you're welcome to any others you want to come to. If you're in the area, come on in.
We'll be here till midnight tonight, so. Okay, next item that I would like to take, that will be item 11C.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11C is the Presentation by Miami-Dade Transportation Planning Organization. Executive Director Eileen Buchle, and on behalf of the director, we have Mr.
Jesús Guerra.
Mr. Guerra of the Strategic Miami Area Rapid Transit Smart Plan.
Welcome to the City of West Miami, Mr. Guerra.
Thank you for this opportunity, and honestly, I would like to appreciate this moment. Eileen Buchle, that is our executive director. She was scheduled to come, but unfortunately, at the last minute, she couldn't make it. She called me. I want you to be there, and I'm here. Therefore, on her behalf, we apologize, and I hope to do a good job and answer all your questions and answer regarding our Smart Plan. That is how we call, actually. Okay?
Well, let me, you can do the next one. Okay, on February 18, 1916, I'm sorry, 2016, and I just want to go a little, just very short background. What we are presenting today is this Strategic Miami Area Rapid Transit, but really, this
is a corridor that have been here in Miami-Dade County for many years. We have been evaluating all these corridors, but for the first time, I've been working for the TPO over 25 years, and for the first time, it's very difficult. We have a TPO board that is composed by 13 commissioners, county commissioners, plus the mayors of the larger cities. Actually, we have 25 members in our TPO board, and get the consensus is very difficult, very, very difficult, especially when we talk about transportation, that I'm gonna say something, please don't misunderstand, but when you have a person that walk, ride a bike, and skateboard, drive a car, take transit, everybody is an expert, and everybody has a solution. Therefore, try to get a consensus, everybody is very difficult. Finally, we got a consensus, and we call the Smart Plan, and on February 18, 2016, for the first time, the TPO board approved a resolution that said transit is the highest priority for Miami-Dade County. That means like, this is, for us, means a lot, but you have a direct instruction from the board, that means that we can move forward to the federal level, to the state level, and federal level, to say, we have a plan, we have a priority already set up, let's move forward. Next, please. The second decision that was made by the board was on April 21st. On April 21st, the TPO board endorsed and approved what is called the Strategic Miami Area Rapid Transit Plan, and this is, like I said, there are two components there. We are not just taking the major corridors, we have two components. We can go to the next, please. On the next slide, you see the two components that we have. We have the six major transit corridor, that means like northeast, beach, east-west, north, Kendall, and the south, all the way down to Homestead. But in addition, we have another component that is called the Bus Express Rapid Transit. What we are trying to do with that is connect, make a connection between the rail, the major corridors, and the highway. Highway system is very, very used here in Miami-Dade County. We have a lot of congestion, but one of the thing that we're trying to do is establish express bus services along using the major expressway and hopefully, with dedicated lanes for buses. In some of the occasions, for example, in Miami-Dade Expressway Authority for the east-west, they are building these shoulders a little wider in order to provide direct services for transit along the shoulders, from the Dolphin all the way east to the Mick, and eventually to the downtown area. Next. This is a video. I just kept quiet for a couple of minutes. There is a, no voice, no. There is a voice over there. Okay. If not, maybe I can, I can tell what is going on. Actually, like we're talking, you are seeing there the boundaries, UDB boundaries, urban development boundaries that is in the Miami-Dade County. You can see, go for the beach area to the Everglades, and these are the six corridors that we are proposing to develop for rapid transit. Actually, when we talk about rapid transit, we are not talking specifically about heavy rail or light rail, or BRT, like it is called, Bus Rapid Transit. Over there, you can see there are the dotted lines, are the highway that are connected with the express bus services to the main areas. We were talking about transit-oriented development. This is one of the smaller area that is called for community development. You can see, what we are proposing is develop residential office and commercial spaces along those areas in order to have the density in population and employment to create the appropriate ridership for the community. This is what is called the median level, that is called the metropolitan. In this particular case, you can see that the station is a little different. We have different options, and you can see that now, the number of floors raise up, and basically, you have the same condition, you're gonna have commercial development and job creation in those area. This is what we call regional development. This is probably gonna be in the downtown area and some areas at the end of the lines, where you're gonna have a high development area with something like this, that you can have residential units on top, you can have commercial offices, retailers, everything that is accessible to the areas. Stop. Okay. We missed the last part, that is when we get into the TOD, and you can see the type of development that we are talking about it. It's like, for every single development that we are talking about it, we're basically, what we are doing is increasing the density of the population and increasing the job creation, employment, and facilities for people just to come and live close to the areas. One of the thing that we are talking about it, when we talk about developments, this is the map, and if, oh, let me see if I can find, well, I missed now the point. Well, the red line, the red line is the Kendall Corridor that you can see is connected to the Dayland North. On the south, you have the South Corridor that is along the US-1 from Florida City to Dayland South. On the beach, you have the blue line that is gonna be from, basically, the convention center to downtown Miami and going a little north up to Midtown. On the northeast, you have the, what is called the Brightland Train, that is FECI. That particular corridor is totally private and is already in operation, and from Palm Beach to Broward to Florida, and now they are hoping that by May, I'm sorry, April, May, they're gonna have the service connected from Broward all the way down to downtown. The next corridor on the left is the North Corridor, that is from Martin Luther King to basically the county line that is on the northwest 215 street. You have the east-west corridor that is going from the Mick all the way west to the FIU. And Kendall, that I already mentioned, along Kendall Drive from Dayland North all the way to close to the Crum Avenue. Next. Along these corridors, what we have, along this corridor, we have a high concentration of employment and people. Actually, we use two-mile radius along the corridors, and you can see that 63% of the population in Miami-Dade County, and this is based on 2015, live within two miles of those corridors. We have employment very high, that is basically over 850,000 people that work along this area. Next. We went a little further, and we divided Miami-Dade County in six areas. That is, you can see west, south, northwest, northeast, central, and beach, the beach area. You can see, basically, the average is that for those corridors of those area, 23% of the people work and live within those areas, but you have 76, 77% that are coming from the outside. In the case of the West Miami, we have 30% that live within the corridors and 70% that is coming from the out. Therefore, we were talking before the meeting that traffic is a problem. Traffic is a nightmare here in Miami-Dade County, and we are a global city. I just want to clarify and be sure, like, you understand, like, if you go to New York, if you go to Atlanta, LA, San Francisco, San Diego, you're gonna have a very good transit system, very good, but at the same time, you're gonna have a lot of traffic congestion. Therefore, one thing comes with other, and it's very difficult to take people out of the cars. What we are trying to create is a plan, a system that provide options and opportunities to the people to leave the cars in the house or leave the car in the house and then have the option to go to one of these options that we are proposing. It could be heavy rail, light rail, BRT, Bus Rapid Transit, and this is not only the plan.
Next, please.
This is not only the plan. 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 This is not only the plan, I'm so sorry. One of the thing that you can see, at the end of those corridors, we make a comparison regarding how long it takes with the car, how long it's going to take with the transit system, and you can see, just Kendall, it's going to take 15, 15 minutes from the west to Dailan North, and if you drive, it's going to take like, an hour and a half. This is things, this is during the peak hour, of course, we are talking about it, but one of the thing that we are doing, and at the end of everything, single line, and in between, with those TODs that we are talking about at the medium, high, or low development, we are coordinating with other type of services, like it is, we call first and last mile. When we talk about first and last mile, is for people to, they don't have to drive to the station, they don't have to do that. What we are trying to do is like, provide another options for the people that live close by, within three miles, that they can have other opportunities in order to get access. Like, I don't know if you have a, I think that you have a trolley here in west Miami. No, there is a very, a loop. There are several trolleys that are for free, and Coral Gables Miami, Miami Gardens, Aventura, they have a lot of those services, and this is the type of service that we are looking for. We are trying to make something that is a community level, and let the transit agency to drive and do, do their job in the most congested corridors for transit, and just create this type of friendly and community shutters that people like to use. We are talking about, not only that, we are talking about on-demand services. Same one like you have with Uber, something that you can call, and within 10 minutes, you can get somebody, and it's going to be taken to your home. There are, believe it or not, electric bikes, and scooters that are being used, that you can just fold it and carry on with them. We are providing all those, those activities, or type of options and opportunities for the people that just keep your car in your home, go to work, that is main purpose, to take the people out of the street, and then use your car during the Saturday and Sunday, if that is the case. Next. Who we are working with? We are working with everybody, and that's one of the reason that I'm here. As you can see, we are talking about, this is our transportation partners, Florida Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, Federal Highway Administration, School Board, cities over 15,000, private sectors, CITT, planning, aviation, C-POR, South Florida RTA, South Florida Regional Planning Council, the Turnpike. We have a lot, a lot of partners that are very interested in be part of this process, and they are already with us. Next. This is what we are talking now, and what we are doing, where we are. You see, there are six rapid transit corridors on the top. I'm so sorry, you can, you can go back? Okay, that one. If you can see, the six transit corridors, but in order for us, and this is like everybody else, in order for us to implement the, and build those corridors with the technology that is going to be recommended, we have to go through a process that is called the PDNEs. This is conducted by DOT, and for, by Department of Transportation, and Polyworks. The PDNEs is project development and environment. The issue with that is like, you cannot build your house if you don't go to an architect or engineer, and make a design, and approve all the plans. For us, this is the situation. In order for us to move to design, we have to have the PDNE in places. In addition, in order for us to go to the federal government and knock the door and say, we want some federal funds to apply for these corridors, we have to have the PDNEs. What is the PDNEs? The PDNE is a very technical process, that they evaluate everything, from the technical engineering, alignments, bus station, environmental issues, inclusive, they call into, they get into the, whatever is the technology, technology that is going to be recommended. Technology, we were talking about many type of technologies. Actually, basically, we're limiting to the three technologies that are most used here, that is the heavy rail, that is the 60-meter rail, light rail, that is on the street, and Bus Rapid Transit that is on the street, and basically, it's buses. Special buses, not the bus that you see there, is articulated buses with all the technology that is in place, and, or, the mayor went to China recently to, to see those buses, and he got some impression, good impression, and some bad impression. But this is the knowledge that we're moving now. Actually, this is the type of alternative they were considering with the PDNEs. The, the North Corridor is being conducted by the Florida Department of Transportation. The east-west is conducted by the Department, Department of Transportation, Polyworks, that is the county. The Kendall is DOT. The south is the county. The east, I'm sorry, the northeast is private, and that's what we are doing right now. We having, we are talking to them, we are working with them in order to have all this development that we were talking about before, along the northeast corridor, in order to have a showcase. I don't know how many of you have seen what they are doing in downtown Miami, but this is impressive, very impressive. And the engine that moved that is the Brightline, that that was what they were planning for. And all the development includes three towers, that are going to be like, 40 floors in height, there is signature building is going to be there, it's going to be like, 60 floors, therefore, it's going to be a lot, a lot of work on downtown, that is going to be like a showcase for the Brightline, that is the northeast corridor. At the same time, this is what we're trying to do. The other corridor we have is the beach. The beach is going to be the Department of Transportation and Polyworks, the county, that is taking care of that, and that corridor is very close, and they are working very close with the City of Miami Beach, in order to make that, that something happen there, because that corridor is very important for us. The connection there, there are a lot of people that work over there. Probably, the beach corridor is going to be the one of the corridor that you can have open the lines, seven days, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, because there are activities there the whole week. Regarding the, the Bus Express Rapid Transit System that is called BRT, actually, we are looking for, or we are putting the money for $2 million in order to get the PDNE for that. Once we had the PDNE for that, then we move to the design. The PDNE that we were talking about for the, and I'm getting maybe a little technical, but the PDNE that we were talking about for this corridor include 30% of design. That means when we have the PDNE, and we are ready to move, 30% of design is going to be there. What is going to be the next step? The next step is going to be that DOT and the county, they're going to evaluate the different corridors with a different alternative, and they're going to make a recommendation. Three recommended alternatives are going to be move forward with cost, maintenance, operation, everything. Then, it's going to be presented to the board, and the board is the one who's going to decide, this is the one that we recommend, and we're going to be moving forward, that is called the local preferred alternative, or mostly, commonly said, LPA. Next, please. These are all the transportation partners that we have working with. We have been making presentation to, actually, there are, I think, 30, 35 municipalities in Miami-Dade County, plus the county, and we got already support from the 25 municipalities, and you're going to be the number 26, if we got it, of course. But we are very positive, we are doing a lot of work, in addition to the PDNE, just parallel to the PDNE, we are working with the line use, we are working with the integration and visualization of the old system, we are working with economy development, in order to create not only the facility, but create anything, like policies and everything that we need to have in place in order to make this happen soon. Saying that, if you have any question, I'm going to be here for any question you may have. We really appreciate your support, and I'm ready for any question.
I think, I think we're, we're beyond ready for something like this to happen. So, I mean, transportation, like you mentioned, the other cities, they have a great transportation system, and somehow, Miami, as a matter of fact, I was talking to a fellow architect in, in, in New York, and he says, fortunately, Miami is still a village, and, and, I mean, there's no connectivity. I mean, we're scattered, and, and I'm glad that you're taking a step forward, and hopefully, it could be accomplished sooner rather than later.
I really appreciate that words. Yes, it's a huge challenge. First, the challenge to get the consensus, and now the challenge is not only for the consensus. When we have the consensus, now, what is going to be next? And the next is going to be, make a decision about the alternative, the local preferred alternative, move forward with the design, but in order to move forward with the design, we are working with the financial aspects. I can tell you something, it's, I make it like a joke, but I would love to have a Lamborghini, but I, when I realized I don't have the money for the Lamborghini, and I said, okay, that's fine. I start to save money, get the Lamborghini. Once I got the Lamborghini, I realized that when I go to change oil, it's going to be 500 bucks, I don't have the money. Then I have, one more time, go back and save some money in order to keep the maintenance and operation, and finally, I have my Lamborghini, I have the money to maintain, and I'm going to be stuck in I need five running 10 miles per hour, when that car is designed for higher speed. That's the type of situation that we are facing. We have to choose for, choose for the right decision, we have to have the money in place. Everybody's dreaming about billions and billions of dollars, but that billions of dollars, make a commitment, maintenance operation, and we have to maintain and operate these services in the appropriate place and the appropriate way that we are, we need to do it in order to make success.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
You finished?
Yes.
Mr. Guerra, you make a very professional presentation.
Thank you.
I congratulate you. Very good. And this booklet, beautiful, expensive, beautiful. Well, let me tell you, Mr. Guerra, my third question. While you're talking about these corridors, what are you offering to the public? You are going to put new buses?
No.
Now, you, you are going to put new railroads, trains? What, what are you offering?
Okay, this is what is offering. When we go to the PDNE, and we go to the board, and they make a decision, let's take just an example. This is not what is reality. There are too many things going on, but for example, we said, okay, let's take the North Corridor, we're going to have, they want heavy rail. Heavy rail means an extension of the metro rail. That means like, we have to build the metro rail, we have to have, bring new cars, we have to make infrastructure, brand-new infrastructure, technology, and in addition, have the money to build and maintain. Along the North Corridor, they said, okay, this is not the option. We're going to go for Bus Rapid Transit. We have to, one more time, develop the both lanes that we're going to be using for dedicated lanes for buses, special buses, there have to be brand-new buses with the technology, all these stations, like it, like it should be. And the service is going to be, I'm sorry, the service, I can't have trains, or I have buses, and I have to say, the service is going to be 40 minutes, it's not going to be working, it's going to be something between five and 10 minutes.
The chairman of the, of the commission, Mr. Bobo,
Yeah.
He asked for, he likes, he offered to the commission, the county commission, to think about rails. Now, the county mayor, Jimenez, he said,
Buses.
There is no money for rails. I like the buses. Now, no money for rails, he like the buses, but nothing is concrete, nothing is done. Now, Jimenez went to China these past days, and they're coming, he and the commissioner, Pepe Diaz, they're talking about, they went to see trains, and railroads, and metro rails, so I don't get it, because you are from this respectful institution, TPO. If Mayor Jimenez want buses, and the chairman wants railroads, train, and they discuss that not possible one thing, not possible the other thing, so this is going to be an ethereal discussion. Now, in this corridors you presented, I mean, the department you represent, you're very professional, you're doing a good job, because you're doing very well what you have to do. But my friend, I have been, I am here in Miami for 55 years, 56 is going to be. All these corridors are done. The corridor, this yellow line to Homestead, from Daila to Homestead, is there. They make it Alex Pannella's time, I think, and the buses runs empty. I was in Homestead the other day, and I was, look at the buses, empty, the stations, dirty, dilapidating, dilapidating, something very negative. Now, Kendall, Miami to Kendall, the metro rail is already done. The 27th Avenue Metro Rail is already working. The High Alleya Metro Rail is already working. The, this east coast railroad is already working. A-36 is already working. A-36 to 107 Avenue to FIU is already done. I don't see here, for instance, extension for A-36 to Crum Avenue.
This is in the plan.
But it's not here?
No, because this is, okay, no.
You, you're doing your job very good, but I have to tell the, this table and the record for the people watching, that this is incomplete. This is nothing new in it. Beautiful, this is very nice. Whoever present this, it's a very nice pamphlet. Well, no substance. Sorry, it's not personal with you. Nothing new? Nothing, A-36? So, I appreciate your visit, and you explained something wonderful, because the way this is done, and the way you're explaining, and everything has to be done, and these buildings, you know, they high-rise buildings, but the TPO is for transportation, and they selling, you know, the station, the high-rise buildings, big buildings, big station. I think this is something very nice presented by you. I appreciate that, but this is, I'm sorry. Empty air.
Commissioner, can I, you're going?
You take, yeah, the floor is used.
Understood, but perhaps, this is not the forum, if you have such an interest in this, we, we have to take it to the county level. We, that's something that you have to go over there when, when those meetings take place. But basically, if we do nothing, nothing will happen. I mean, yes, it might be a, a dream, but basically, the reason we're here, I mean, he, Mr. Guerra is here today is to present it to us. Either we agree or disagree, jump on it. City of West Miami, believe me, do you remember the number that he mentioned? 15,000? We don't have 15,000 people here. So, so whether, you know, we, we're dropping the bucket, but with good intention.
Mayor,
Yes.
I already said that this gentleman, very professional, I like the way he came, he present this beautiful pamphlet, everything is wonderful, but, you know, everything is wonderful, everything is wonderful, Mr. Guerra.
If, if, Mr. Mayor, you allow me just three minutes, I just, I just want to clarify.
Yeah, let's make it short, because there's all the items that I need to...
All the corridors, like you just said, they are in place. The, most of the corridors that we are selecting, one of the major costs is right-of-way acquisition. Those corridors are already on the road, on the street, 16th Street, using the median, this is one thing. The second thing, when we talk about the alternative that we are running, it's going to be heavy rail, light rail, or buses, it's not dependent on us, it's depending on the PDNEs. The PDNE is the one that we're going to determine the cost, the cost, total cost, capital cost, and maintenance and operating cost for each alternative, and the ridership. That means like, when we talk about that, like you said, if I go to Homestead, and there is no, no ridership, they're not going to buy a rail over there. They're going to be looking for an alternative that can satisfy the demand for each particular corridor, and at the end, it's going to be the decision of the elected officials.
Mr. Guerra, I'm sorry, I congratulate you. You did your work perfect, but I just expressing what I have inside, because too many years, you know, in the same ballgame. But you are doing, doing right, perfect job. Congratulations.
Okay, any further question for Mr. Guerra? Okay. Can you, thank you very much. We have the next item, can you read it into the record, please?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11D, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami endorsing and supporting the Miami-Dade Transportation Planning Organization's Strategic Miami Area Rapid Transit Smart Plan by Mayor and City Commission.
Okay.
Motion.
So, I have a motion for, is that for approval?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Planes, how do you vote?
Who do you call?
Planes.
Commissioner Planes.
This is the, the resolution in support of the smart program.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is the only one?
You vote yes. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes, I support this dream.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Guerra.
Thank you, sir.
Next item that I would like to take, that will be item 11E.
11D was, is just what we read, the resolution.
EE, I, I said E. E-E, I said E. Here's an E.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, item nine, item AE. This is a public hearing. Property address, 1515 Southwest 65th Place, West Miami, Florida, 32144. Special use permit for plan development, 2018, zero, zero, one. Property owner, Ezequiel Herran and Nancy Herran. Applicant requests a special use permit for plan development for the property at 1515 Southwest 65th Place, West Miami, Florida, 32144. The property is zoned for R2 duplex, and the applicant is requesting to redevelop the property by demolition of the existing structure and construction of a new two-family, one-story duplex. Zoning, zoning ordinance, 282, section 2B, 41.
Thank you. Mr. Penna?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, commissioners.
By, by the way, do you have an easel or something, or no?
No.
Okay.
You need an easel?
No, I don't, I got plans here.
Okay.
Maybe the architect might need an easel, that's why.
March, uh...
Apologies for that.
March 27th? I don't have my...
March 27th.
2018, the planning and zoning board had a public hearing for the same item, where the applicant presented his plans to demolish the existing single-family house and build a new two duplex, two-unit duplex, modern, I believe it's 3-2, on each side. I'm sure they'll, they'll present it again. And the, the board heard it, and they heard from the public. There was a couple of questions from one gentleman in the public regarding the, the changing, allowing a duplex on that property. He was informed that the area's been zoned duplex for over 50 years, it's just that the property that existed there was a single-family house. Mr. Herran has owned the property for a long while now, and he finds now the, his ability to tear it down and build himself a duplex. It's allowed within the code, everything that's presented is within the code, and we placed a memo of suggestions as far as the, the tiles for the roof, the impact windows for the, for the property, and the brick pavers as shown on the, on the plans. They had a unanimous vote by the board. A unanimous vote, vote by the board.
Did, did the board have any recommendations for changes or anything? They approved as presented?
To adopt the, the memo I presented.
Mr. Penna, on that spot, you said it's a single-family, it's one, there's plenty of, of room for the duplex. It fits with, within the... What about, what about parking? It's going from, from one residence to two, so would there be ample parking for the, the two different units?
Yeah, they're exceeding our requirements at present.
They are, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is there an actual picture of what the, the duplex will look like, or no? I don't see it. An actual photo?
Yeah, there's, there's the elevation, if you turn to sheet, uh...
Elevation? I need a colored picture of a building, elevation? I can't read elevation.
Eh, close enough.
Just kidding.
Look, look at A4, that's why I wanted an easel, but anyway.
Page four?
Page four.
Oh, four.
Four.
Okay, I got it, I got it.
Okay.
I'm here. Okay. I can clearly see this, okay.
This is a...
Yep. Very good.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Penna, I think you answered, you answered my question, my typical question, is it impact windows, or it has impact windows, right? And it's gonna have a cement tile roof?
Yes.
Okay? And you asked the one about the parking? They exceed, as a matter of fact, one of the parking, you have enough room almost to park another car there, on the, the one that is about 38 feet from, so, so that's good. So, that's good. Plans, by the way? Any...
Now, Mr. Penn, these will be rentals, or rental for sale? You, you will maintain ownership of them then, and you'll make sure that...
Can, can, hold on a second.
I'm sorry.
Can you state your name for the record, whoever's gonna answer, and, and an address? So, we, I'm sorry...
My name is Ezequiel Herran, I'm the owner of the property.
Your, your name? Okay. And, and the address? The same address as this?
1515 Southwest 65th Place.
Okay. So...
Okay, so you'll be in charge of making sure they remain looking nice and new the whole time, right? You'll make sure that you maintain their properties?
Yes. Yes.
So that they're presentable to our standards? Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Any other question? I mean, I think it's a, I think it's a very good plan, so I need a motion?
Motion.
You have a what?
Just gotta read the resolution.
Oh, sorry, I jumped the gun. Okay. Can you read the resolution, please?
Mr. Mayor, you have to open the public hearing.
Thank you, it's, it's being intense today.
I understand.
Let's open the public hearing. Anybody who wants to speak on the subject?
Nobody has registered, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We close the public hearing, back to the table for discussion. Any further discussion? Okay, I need a motion.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Item 11F, resolution of the mayor and the city commission of the city of West Miami approving a special use permit for plan development at 1515 Southwest 65th Place, West Miami, Florida, 32144. Applicant requests a special use permit for plan development for the redevelopment of the property by demolition of the existing structure and construction of a new two-family, one-story duplex, and in lieu of thereof requiring cer- certain terms and conditions. Mayor and city commission.
Motion.
Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Blanes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca? Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
When, when will you start the, the project? I guess I should've asked that earlier, never mind. Go ahead.
Madam Clerk, any recommendation, any items to be taken out of order, or just go back to the original?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would request to take out of order item 11G, which is a, a resolution to approve a program, pace program.
11G, you said?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Can you read it, please?
Sure. Item 11G, this is a resolution of the mayor and city commission of the city of West Miami authorizing the city manager to execute a subscription agreement between Florida Pace Funding Agency and City of West Miami for the purpose of providing the property owners of the city of West Miami the opportunity to participate in the state of Florida approved, approved pace program pursuant to city resolution 2017-04 for energy-efficient property improvement, providing for effective date, providing for severability, and instructing the city clerk to transmit this resolution to the property appraiser and to the Miami-Dade Tax Collector's Office. Mayor and city commission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I have a question. Commissioner Suarez, are, are you gonna join on this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Jose Marcos. I live in Miami-Dade. I live in the unincorporated area of Kendall, 11347 Southwest 158 Place, Miami, Florida, 33196. And I'm here representing the Florida Pace Funding, on behalf of the Florida Pace Funding Agency. I work for Counterpoint Energy Solutions, and we are the program administrator for the Florida Pace Funding Agency, which we want to bring pace to the city of West Miami. I believe you had some questions, or, or do you want, would you like me to continue? Because you did...
No, 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 that's fine, that's fine.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may? This is in keeping with the new concept whereby companies finance home improvements to the property owners. In this case, they're making this program extensive to not only residential, commercial, and multifamily uses, for improvements to roofs, air conditioning systems, impact windows, and those types of projects to harden the structure to mitigate for future hurricanes. This program was created as a result of the Florida statutes, a law that enables property owners now to finance this through a creative financing option through the property appraiser's office, where the city basically approved a, approves the inter-local agreement with the corridor vendors, with the Pace Funding Corridor vendors.
Well, Corridor is another program administrator?
It's another program. There's several corridors.
So, the Florida Pace Funding is, is a pace provider? And then you have the Green Corridor, or such as you have Renew Financial, I don't know the exact name of their program administrator, but they are the program administrators that work with, they are a special purpose government, that work with governments such as yourself, like the city of West Miami. And we have side agreements with the tax collector, as well as a property appraiser, and that in itself, they provide us the ability to collect the non-ad valorem assessments that are placed on these properties, when the property owner decides to use pace as a financing solution.
Exactly. And, and another option, as early on, when this was presented to us, I know that Commissioner Rodriguez was very big on having a, an option list for residents to choose from if they choose this route to make such improvements to their properties. Mr. Villalobos and I have reviewed the agreement extensively, section by section, and we made some changes. Those changes were submitted to your office, Mr. Marcos? And I believe it's been checked off by legal, representing your agency?
Yes.
And with the exception of a couple of housekeeping items, and certain, call it terminologies that have no material impact on the relationship between the city and Florida Pace, Pace Funding, Mr. Villalobos agreed that the contract or this, this proposal could move forward before the city commission. Our involvement is really dealing with the contractors that come to pull permits for the various disciplines. There will be no administrative duty on the part of the city, therefore, the program will not tax our administrative office or our administrative resources. The company will provide to the city, based on this agreement, a report, a quarterly report, if I'm not mistaken, I'm working from memory here, of those properties that they have indeed entered into agreements with these property owners for said improvements. And the only, the benefit to this is that the building department gets to augment their, their revenue stream by the issuance of these building permits, because the contractors are vetted or approved by the Florida Pace Funding Agency.
So, our contractors are not ordinary contractors, they're vetted through our program. And specifically, you know, when you go outside, you wanna change some sort of, some sort of asset on your property, you get a contractor, you hire them personally. That's not the same, that's not the way we do it at Pace. Pace, we vet the contractors, we teach them how, we teach them what pace is, and the very best part is, the property owner, the property owner does not, sorry, we do not pay the contractor until the property owner is satisfied. And that is the assurance that Pace provides versus, you know, you yourself hiring a contractor outside of, you know, your workspace to change some sort of fixture on your house, or something of that nature. So, it's very beneficial for the property owner. And like she mentioned, there's no obligation for the local government, we do not use your resources in any way, shape, or form. We handle everything on our end, all we need to do is just have side agreements with the tax collector, who collects the non-ad valorem assessment for us, and then they're able to, they are able to collect that sort of, that, that assessment on behalf of, on behalf of the city of West Miami for us. And that is the only, and they are paid a fee, a statutory fee, the tax collector and the property appraiser, for doing that collection for us. That fee can be negotiated as a sidebar, but we have, we already have been working with Miami-Dade County Property Appraiser and Miami-Dade Tax Collector. Just to give you an idea, 27 out of 34 municipalities in Miami-Dade have already adopted pace. Specifically unincorporated, the very biggest part of Miami-Dade County. And, and in itself, the Miami-Dade property tax and tax collector already understand what pace is. So, it's definitely, it's not, it's not new to them, so, which is a good thing, and we just wanna keep helping the environment and bringing sustainability to cities like yourself.
Thank you, thank you. Any, any questions?
I have one for the manager. Madam Manager, this is, would be the second vendor that we will have the agreement with?
This would be the second vendor, if you choose to approve it this evening.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Okay. City Attorney?
There is a legal, in the legal world, there is a vernacular terminology called the shotgun approach. That means that whenever someone has a, an injury or damage, the attorney representing the plaintiff will shoot at everybody. In other words, will demand the, the contract to the pace program, the company, and the city. Okay? In that sense, you know, with a bundle of caution, I demand or request very respectfully that the terms indemnification be inserted. And it would read the, the agency, that would be them, its successors, in case they sell it or assign, shall indemnify or harmless the city of West Miami and all of officer, agents, employees, and instrumentality of any and all liability. And it goes out into a whole paragraph that prevents anyone from, even if they sue us, they will be responsible for my fees and for any cost that can accrue to the city of West Miami. The second issue that I always demand and request respectfully is that the venue is within the 11th judicial circuit in Miami, Dade County, Florida. Because there are some companies that, yes, they give you the right to be participant or to sue them, but they place their venue and their jurisdiction in Maryland, or New York, or any other state in the union, or in Jacksonville. In other words, in order to litigate, you have to fly over there, even if you're 100% right, going to court of amendment. So, those two items are, the rest is just mechanics. As far as I'm concerned, this is the two most important things that, within my field.
Okay, and, and are those terms accepted by them already?
Yes, sir.
They are? Okay. Just wanna know. Any further questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Attorney. Thank you once again for your overabundance of caution in protecting and looking out for the best entrance, interest of our city. Thank you.
I couldn't say it better. Good. I'm glad you did. Okay, well, in that case, do we need to, no, you read the resolution already, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then I need a motion?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
Okay. Can you call the vote?
Yes, Commissioner Suarez.
And that's for approval, correct?
For approval. Commissioner Suarez, how do you vote?
We approve the new vendor?
Yes.
For this pace, yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca? Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five zero, item passes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Jose will be in touch with you as soon as the agreements are executed, so that we can do the signing.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And by the way, this company is very efficient. I mean, we have been trying to communicate ourselves, and successfully, and they're very responsive. You call them, and they respond immediately.
Good. Glad to hear. At this time, if you don't mind, can we take a two-minute break? At this time, if you don't mind, can we take a two-minute break?
Mr. Mayor?
All right, let's take a two-minute break. Okay, we're back in session. Madam Clerk, can you guide me to the order of the agenda? Where shall we go? Where are we?
Okay, I recommend we follow the regular order of the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
So back to the beginning?
Back to item five, Report of City Manager.
Okay, so, item five.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, I want to publicly thank, which will be followed with a memo, I want to thank our Public Works Director and Department, and our West Miami Police Department, the chief, the captain, the deputy, and all the officers who made the 2018 Easter Egg Hunt Celebration a successful one. We will be sending a memo to each employee who participated, and the West Miami Recreation Center, and all of the employees who contributed to a very nice event. And to the mayor and city commission, thank you for putting this event together, and for the benefit of the kids, actually. This is for them. The next item in my report is, we have, we have heard from the auditors that they're very close to the conclusion of the September 30th, 2017 audit, and they have, they will be presenting the audit at the May 2nd, 2018 meeting, if that is acceptable to the commission. They will appear before the commission with the financial statements. The next item in my report is the sidewalk project, as you all know, is well underway. I know that I have heard comments from Mayor Mujina and from Commissioner Blanes on some positive calls that you have received from your constituents, thanking the city for finally addressing this problem. This is a citywide problem. I asked Mr. Penna to give me an idea of where we're at, how many slabs, how many slabs have been actually replaced by the project, and I believe that we are at 200 slabs right now, from what Mr. Penna is advising, and there's much more to go. At the next commission meeting, not at the next commission meeting, but at the May 2nd meeting, we will be presenting to you an opportunity to increase the allocation on the sidewalk project, and we'll give you a detailed memo on what we propose, but I want to defer to the May 2nd meeting, out of respect for Mr. Penna, who will be on vacation at the next commission meeting, so we'll bring that report over to you. I believe we can make a dent in the sidewalk problem, something that has existed for many years, and I think that will have a tremendous benefit to the community. That said, we still have not received a dime from FEMA. As you know, I come back and I report to you and I keep you abreast of what's happening. We're still having to respond to numerous emails and requests for additional information, and we have yet to see the first dollar come back to us. I mean, we're moving very rapidly towards the hurricane season, and they're lagging. I have contacted the state representative for FEMA. I copied you all on that mail, on that email. I have yet to receive a phone call or a response from their office. So from what I hear, we are doing very well in terms of submitting our projects and submitting the information, but show me the money.
When, when are we scheduled to start paying, paying back the money to the bank?
We have been paying every month, and this is why I have this report to you each and every meeting, because we're paying close to $3,000 a month, which is a non-budgeted item. This is something that FEMA will not repay, the city of West Miami, so we're on the hook for close to $3,000 a month. If at least they give us the first portion of the money, which was the debris collection by the outside vendor, we can put that money back into principal and deal with paying the interest over on a smaller amount. But they have not responded, and it's in FEMA's hands, it's at the state's hands for approval. We have contacted them and they have not responded to us.
Anything that we can do as?
I am going to send another email by the end of the week and attempt to place a phone call to somebody with some authority that can help us, maybe even to the governor's office. I believe that somebody at the state level should understand that this is very taxing on a small city that doesn't have a budget for this, and we're on the hook for the $1.5 million. We have lived up to our end of the bargain. We have complied with every single deadline that they have requested, and we have not heard anything back from them, or have received a dime back.
And if I recall correctly, we have a deadline of, what, one year to pay back?
We have, yes, that's why we recommend.
When is that coming up?
That is coming up, if my memory doesn't fail me, September 20th, if my memory doesn't fail me, 2018. So believe it or not, it's quickly approaching.
Okay.
Okay, so I will report back to you. This is right in my immediate radar as a follow-up item. I'm getting a little concerned about it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. That, oh, on a lighter note and on a beautiful note, I want to report to you, and you probably know, that Mr. John Michael Lopez and his wife had baby twins, two little beautiful girls, six pound, eight ounces, and six pounds, nine ounces. Both babies and mommy are doing excellent. I hear that they're not getting a lot of sleep at the Lopez family home. The little, the big sister has embraced the twins, and John is on paternity leave. So the office there, the rec center, is in the hands of Megan, Sergio, Julio Iglesias, and all the others who labor at the park, and they do an outstanding job, and they know to call me if there's anything wrong. So if you need anything, let me know. We will be in touch with John Michael via telephone, but we'll try not to interrupt his paternity leave until he returns. We sent flowers on your behalf to the Lopez family, and they were tickled to death, so.
Thank you.
Yep, the new generation. So that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next item?
Item six, Report of the City Attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney.
There's many reports by the city attorney. There have been many reports by the city attorney.
Next item?
Item seven, Report for the City Engineers, non-disieving. Item eight.
The attorney spends 75% of the time with city of West Miami.
Yes.
A report.
Thank you. We really appreciate that, for your commitment. Next item?
Committee Reports, Item eight, Report of the Mayor.
I was going to report on the Easter Egg Hunt, but the manager, you know, took my, and I'm sure that Commissioner Blanes was also going to speak about it, and Rhonda Rodriguez, who was really excited with that raffle. And by the way, can we get a new, can we get a new bombo for next time? Every time we spend that thing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, yes, yes.
You know, the things fly out.
Yes.
And we need a new bullhorn or something, because we could not.
Batteries.
We needed batteries.
All our age groups took off at one time, because we couldn't direct them accordingly.
And John had to leave.
And John had to leave. John wasn't there, so we need.
He had no choice.
We need some sort of bullhorn that works on the field.
Okay, I don't have anything else. What, anything else you want to add?
Yeah. Everybody had a great time. The kids enjoyed it, and that's what it's all about.
And has anybody seen the Mr. Cube video, the flyby?
No, I haven't seen it.
Great job.
I saw an authorized.
It's online, I haven't seen it.
It is online. It's on Facebook. It's on the website. He used the drone.
Yeah, Rhonda's running back and forth and.
I saw the drone. That's pretty cool.
We're really.
So, Mr. Cube, thank you.
I do have to say, the improvements we made this year were tremendous, as far as making the areas, the larger areas, and the raffles, you know, so these little small changes and improvements we made, I think were substantial. Made a big difference in the enjoyment of the children.
And the police department is very happy for that.
And.
Anyway, moving right along. Item nine?
Item nine, Citizen Presentations, No Presentations, Under Unfinished Business. Item 10 is a Request for Mitigation on Code Enforcement Leans for Code Violations at 6437 Southwest 16th Street, West Miami, and Owners, Maximo Corso and Max Corso. And, Mr. Attorney, we were in receipt this afternoon of a note by Max Corso, which is in the possession of Mr. Villalobos. I handed you the email by Mr. Corso.
Yes, Mr. Corso, as you remember, came last meeting, and there was a mitigation to $50,000. And then at some point, he stated that the property was under a proceeding.
The microphone was off.
Thank you. I'm sorry, should I start again? Mr. Corso came last week and last commission meeting, and the fine was mitigated to $50,000. But at some point in time, he mentioned that, and he requested sometime in which to pay, et cetera. Except that at some point in time, he mentioned that the home was in probate proceeding. In other words, it was in the hands of the judge. So Mr. Corso had no authority, or at least, you know, it is my understanding that Mr. Corso would not have an authority without leave of court to accept or deny any sort of mitigation, if the property is in fact, I don't know that the property is in fact in the hands of the property court. I offer Mr. Corso pre-charge to the city and to him to review the matter with his attorney and see whether or not I could get to the bottom of this, and even help him at appropriate court. And I did not receive any response. Today, we received a letter, an email by Mr. Corso stating that his attorney had been out of town and that he would contact me as soon as he returned, and see whether we could do what I offered.
Okay, thank you very much. So I believe, how do we go about this? Do we defer this item?
We should defer the item, because he did send the letter, at least he communicated with us. So I don't think it would be fair not to defer the item until such time as he resolves the legal issue that he has.
Madam Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I, Neri and I spoke to Mr. Corso this afternoon, and following a conversation, he sent that email that Mr. Villalobos is reporting on. What we're trying to do is bring you, at every meeting, if there's a mitigation request, we try to keep it to one, so that you can devote proper time to mitigating these liens, hearing from their legal representatives. If we keep this on the agenda, it may conflict with another mitigation that is in the pipeline. So what we requested, what we suggested to Mr. Corso, that he withdraw this application or this petition to mitigate this lien, and we would place it back on the agenda after he, through his attorney and Mr. Villalobos, are satisfied that they can proceed to finally mitigate the item. So I would request that we withdraw it, so we don't have to carry it on the agenda, and it'll come back once they're ready.
Okay, so.
And I further told him at some point that if he delays very much, I might withdraw my offer to him.
Anyway, okay, so let's, how do we go? Just, Madam Clerk?
Just withdraw it. Just withdraw the item, or if you can, I mean, if you would like to vote on the withdrawal, it's fine.
All in favor, withdrawing item A and B, 10A and B?
To be withdrawn, yes, to be, the item to be withdrawn, are all in favor?
All in favor? Five. Okay, passes. Next item?
Next item would be item 11H. Recommendation by the Office of the City Manager Appointing an Acting City Manager for the period commenced in July 30th, 2018, through January 31st, 2019, by City Manager Yolanda Aguilar.
Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as a result of a meeting that you and I had several weeks ago, we agreed to place this item on the agenda, although we're about three and a half, almost four months away from the drop deadline. I bring this item to you pursuant to our meeting, and again, with the accompanying resolution, and also the item of the appointment of the acting finance director. We can take it up now. We can discuss it. I yield to the commission to see when you think it would be prudent to bring it up. If you would like, I am prepared to address it tonight. And if you have any questions or want to give me some guidelines, I'll be happy to incorporate those, whatever the pleasure of the commission is.
Before we open the, I mean, we read the resolution into the record, I would like to open that for discussions, since this is the only forum that we can talk, due to the Sunshine Law, so I want to hear from my colleagues on this item. Anybody wants to speak on the item? One way or the other?
You already talked about this two months ago.
Okay, when did we talk about? We talked about reinstating the manager, but I don't remember.
Correct me if I'm wrong, this is the first time this has come before us, we discussed the manager returning.
That's my recollection.
But this, unless I'm wrong, this is the first time this has come before us.
Okay.
What are we supposed to discuss? The agreement?
Okay.
Or the selection of the person to the position?
Would you read the resolution, so we know what we're talking about? Okay, so let's read the resolution. Let's go for it. Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Item 11I, Resolution of the Mayor and City Commission of the City of West Miami Accepting the Recommendation or Nomination of the City Manager on the Appointment of Mr. Juan Penna to Serve as Acting City Manager for the Period of Time Commenced in July 31st, 2018, through January 31st, 2019, Providing for Effective Date, Mayor and City Commission.
I agree.
So you're supposed to vote the one way or the other, and done it?
Before we vote, before we vote, very simple. I mean, personally, I'm in agreement with the manager. This is, Juan Penna is a person that is very, very familiar with the city. He's very familiar with the everyday thing. I'm sure that it's going to be hard to, for Mr. Penna, to fill Madam Manager's shoes, especially in the financial portion, in the financial aspect of it, you know? I know we have some differences, but I, I mean, I support, I support the manager's, you know, appointment.
May I?
Yes, sir.
When I say we talk, because I'm thinking when the manager announced, I'm sorry, she's over 45, you know? She announced, you know, she was close to retiring, so we talk about something like that. So while we.
Not, not on the table. You might have had a personal conversation, but let me clarify that for the record. That has never come to the table.
What is, is in the table, what is here, is the resolution. You read the resolution right?
Yes.
The resolution is that the Minister Yolanda Aguilar is recommended, is a recommendation, appointing Juan Penna, Acting Manager, beginning July 30th, 2018, right?
Correct.
So it's a recommendation. It's a motion. I make a motion for that. Let's go to get out of here.
I have some questions before a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Seeing as this is the first time it's been brought to the table, I'd like to know if anyone, if at City Manager, there was any other considerations. I need, I have a lot of questions before I can actually place a vote tonight, so.
Go ahead.
I'd like to know if we could have some more time, perhaps defer this to a later time, because I have a lot of questions. I'd like to, I'd like to sit with Mr. Penna at some point to discuss some things with him. He's very qualified. He's very qualified, he's actually overqualified in my opinion, so.
There is a motion, I make a motion, Mayor.
I have a chance to have some questions before your motion, mister.
But there is a motion on the table, when there is a motion, we have to get out.
I was not allowed, I was not given any time for questions before your motion, so I respectfully ask for time.
But what is the motion in the table, how do you call Mr. Attorney?
It has to be second, Mr. Commissioner.
It's a motion and have to be, the procedure is the motion have to continue. Approved or denied, but it's not to create like you planning to withdraw or to extend the time. It's a motion for approval.
I need the city attorney opinion, not your opinion. The motion has not been second.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, you did say, did we have any questions or comments?
Yes, I did.
And I did not, I did not say anything before Mr. Commissioner Suarez jumped over the motion. So he did not allow any of us time to meet your request of questions or comments.
Let me, let me, let me hear from the city attorney. See, it's a partial right and a partial wrong where I just said. When there is a motion, there should be a second. But even if there is a second, there has to be a discussion after the second. Is the commission will, the commission will, the commission may, after a second, discuss the issue. So.
So what you're saying is it needs to be second before we discuss it? Or can we discuss it before we second?
You can discuss it, you can, but as I say, the proper procedure is a motion and there's a second and the discussion on the motion.
We have always discussed, we have always discussed, I'm sorry, City Attorney, we have always discussed before and then after we discuss it, as a matter of fact.
You're right, you're right, you're right.
Wait, wait, let me clarify something for a second here. The, we talked about the recommendation and the reason there was no discussion is because the resolution was not read. They said, okay, let's read the resolution so we can discuss it. That's what I recall, I mean, we can play a tape back, but that's what I remembered.
Correct.
And so I just want to know one or the other. Does the motion needs to be second before we discuss it or can we discuss?
You can do it one way or the other, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I prefer to.
That's why I said that I was partially right and partially wrong.
Yeah, but may I speak?
Yes, sir.
When I make a motion, Commissioner Yolanda Rodriguez start to talk, it doesn't allow anybody, anybody else to speak for second or whatever. She start to talk and I waiting if somebody second my, my motion or no. I make a motion to approve the recommendation of the manager.
Commissioner Suarez, the chair of the table is the mayor. The mayor opened up the table for questions or comments. Before you allowed anyone to propose a question or comment, you made a motion.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, no, no, thank you, I'm the chair.
Well, but you have to let the other people talk?
And we did.
No, you didn't.
We.
Incorrect, you didn't, sir.
Okay, I'm the chair, so I'm going to take it up. We're going to discuss this item first, okay, before we second the motion. I said my part, as you said, you have several questions, go ahead with the question.
I'd also like to hear more from the City Manager about her recommendation, the parameters of her recommendation.
Okay, Madam Manager?
Thank you, Commissioner, if I, I mean, Mayor, if I may address the Commissioner's questions.
Yes, please do.
There have been no parameters per se because the item, this is the first time this comes to the table. In anticipation of the ending of my drop, which is July 30th, I looked at the charter and conferred with our city attorney and met with commissioners individually to discuss, to see if there were going to be any guidelines provided by you or whether I was going to nominate. And my nomination is subject to commission ratification. So what did I do? I looked from within. I looked first at Mr. Pena only because he's been here 37 years. He knows every department of the city as well as I do and sometimes better than I do. I also looked at the possibility at nominating the chief of police. However, when I spoke to the chief of police, he advised me that a lot of changes would have to take place on a temporary basis until I came back, that he needed to make in the department to make the transition one that could work out. He would have to promote the deputy chief to a chief's position or an acting chief. He would have to promote the captain and a lot of changes within the department had to be made. And he didn't think that for such a short period of time, it was worthy of the changes that he anticipated. And expenses come with those changes as well, so.
And he would have to resign as well.
Exactly. Then we had to tackle the issue of the dual office holding, which we have a small conflict if Mr. Pena is ratified by the commission as the acting city manager. You cannot be a sworn law enforcement personnel or a sworn member of the city in a sworn capacity and act as an acting city manager because there are legal opinions that we have shared with our city attorney, published by the Attorney General's Office, that speak to the issue of dual office holding.
And by the way, it was very well researched by.
Deputy Chief. There are, he submitted to us some of the review materials that he and the chief conferred about. And so obviously, I looked at two individuals that were qualified from within. I never even thought about looking outside because there's no, there have been no guidelines set for this appointment. Believe me, it's hard, it's difficult for me to have to address you. I don't want to put anybody in a predicament. I would like to see a flawless transition for a six-month period of time until I come back. So, like I said, if this commission, by majority of its members, would like to pursue with it, with the accepting a nomination this evening, I would be prepared to do it. If you have any other sentiments, I think this is the venue for you to discuss it. I, I'm not a mind reader, all I could do is be prepared to submit to you a recommendation.
And there is a sunset provision, by the way, it's not a permanent thing, it's a sunset provision of, there's a date there, right?
I don't have the resolution with me, but yes, there's a date and the date is July. It starts, the sunset provision ends on January 31st, 2019. I can actually, according to the state retirement system, I can assume the position of city manager again on February 1st, 2019. I have to be gone for a full six months as an employee of the City of West Miami.
Okay, thank you. I believe Commissioner Rodri has several questions, so let's keep it moving.
Well, based on what the manager just said, how does that, since the chief of police would have had to resign, how does it affect the chief code compliance, which is also a title?
He would have to resign as chief code enforcement officer of the city for the period of time in question. Again, there are attorney general opinions that support that.
And then who would appoint, I guess, an acting chief?
He would have to appoint an acting chief, again, that becomes a department director subject to ratification by the commission. So there's a lot of domino effects in the changes.
You may ask, Mr.?
Mr. Pena, you want to answer that question, please?
Whether or not he has an idea about what he's going to do.
But, well, I, okay, here's the thing. Apparently, there's a lot of questions and there's a lot of things that had to take place. So if we defer, I mean, I mean, with all due respect, I mean, I'd rather hear from everybody, you know, and then make one way or the other, with all due respect, I mean.
Basically, Mr. Mayor, I would have to resign as chief code enforcement officer and appoint Martin Garcia as the chief code enforcement officer.
For permanent or temporary?
The same period of time.
Same period of time. With a sunset provision, correct, Mr. Villalobos, as well?
Correct. Well, he would be an employee, so therefore it would be to the will of the commission to have been, I mean, to the manager, not the commission. He would be an employee, he would not be someone that would be an officer to the effect that he will be only here for about six months.
And, Ms. Pena, that would be the only office that would be the domino effect in Public Works?
Everything else is under the purview of the manager. Director of Planning, Director of Zoning, that's all under the purview of the manager.
Which means it would be.
She likes to appoint the Public Works Director or the Planning and Zoning Director. That's her appointment, which she could keep herself, except there.
Okay, so that means that every department in Public Works would be under the purview of the acting city manager?
That's correct.
Which would, which is being recommended that it would be yourself?
That's correct.
So you would basically be in charge of every department in the city besides police, basically?
What was the question?
And police.
And supervision of police.
And police, so it's every department?
Yes.
My question, I was just clarifying, Mr. Pena, if, while acting for those six months, would be head of every department in the city?
It does the role of the manager.
Right, no, well, as of right now, the manager.
Yes.
Mr. Pena is Public Works Director, Chief Co-Compliance Officer. He's not City Manager.
But he responds to the manager, everybody responds to the manager.
Okay.
So I think the issue has to do with, that's why code enforcement, because it's enforcing. You know, it's, I'm trying to look for the word, but I can't find it, so I'm just going to use the word intimidation.
That doesn't sound too good.
No, no, I'm serious, no, no, no.
I think you're right there. Well, I'm sure, but I had to take that one.
No, no, that's the root, that's the root of the law, that's the root of the law. Because it's a perception, you know, if you're a police officer, you enforce the law. If you're a code enforcement officer, you enforce the law. As a matter of fact, if you, if you go around town in other cities, the code enforcement officer falls under the police department. As a matter of fact, in some cities, like city of, one of the ones that comes to mind right now, Surfside, they even carry a gun.
In Hollywood, in the city of Hollywood.
So, so that's why, you know, that has to be, you know, it's mandated that he has to resign that position for whatever period. Okay, next question?
It's more of a comment than a question, and I'm going to be brutally honest, Mr. Pena. Again, I think you're more than qualified, you're overqualified. And it's not, if you can do the job, because I know you can, my concern is more perception. Perception that one person is running the show and blurring the lines from one department to the next. Perception, outside perception. I'm not concerned if Mr. Pena can do the job because I know he can with his eyes closed and backwards. No question on my mind. So my concern, and I'm being, you know, brutally honest, my concern is perception, blurring of the lines from one department to the next.
Well, point well taken. In terms of perception, it's only perception, by the way.
Of course.
Because anything, any decision has to come to the commission and be ratified by us.
Not really, I mean, day-to-day decisions, no.
But.
Monetary, when he wants to buy something and stuff like that, yeah, of course.
Give me a specific.
Again, it's not, it's not so much specific, just perception of, it's putting, I, in my mind, it's putting Mr. Pena in a very precarious position as, you know, for someone to, again, just perception, blurring of the lines, you know, overlapping of departments. You know, if someone meets with Mr. Pena as a public, as a Public Works Director and that's the person will have to meet with Mr. Pena as an acting city manager. Again, nothing to do with his qualifications, no, please, no one misinterpret what I'm saying here. He can do it blindfolded, walking backwards, hopping on one leg. I have no question on my mind. And I'm just throwing this out there, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm, you know.
Okay, I, yeah, go ahead, I'm listening.
That's it, it was just, it was my thoughts. With that said, I'm done.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, you, any particular reason why you want to defer this item?
I'm sorry, but too soon, this is going to be delayed.
Okay. Okay, so yours is timing, okay, okay?
I guess on that, I would have a question, that why are we doing it this soon? Now that Vice Mayor Blanas is saying that, is there a reason why we're doing it now? Not closer to the, to the date?
As, if you remember when the Madam Manager spoke at the beginning, we had a meeting. I personally asked her to put it in the agenda. So, and she mentioned that in the beginning of her, you know, when she started speaking. So why, I mean, why wait? I mean, it's not effective until the time's certain. So maybe I'm the type of person that I don't like to talk about, maybe you all have a lot of time, I'm sorry, I'll be blunt, but I don't. So I don't like to rehash and talk and talk and talk about the same item or, I listen to everybody. And then as I listen, I'm for my opinion. And then as I form my opinion, I take action. And, because if we don't take action, then everything piles up. And, you know, and you rehash it again, rehash it again, rehash it again. I mean, if Mr. Pena is a qualified person, it was chosen by the city manager, I mean, I mean, blurring the lines, I don't see it because, I'll give you an example. I'll give you an example. If a sidewalk is broken, I don't call Mr. Pena, I call him the Madam Manager, and I suggest you do. If something, I don't call any department director directly, I mean, I call the manager. I call the manager for, and if I don't call her, I copy her on the email. Which, by the way, that sidewalk that I told you about is broken, so, near my house. By whatever, the power like, the one that I thought that was going to be broken, it got broken, so.
By the way.
By the way, but he's aware of it, she's aware of it. And so basically, I mean, we get texts all the time from the city manager about a police incident. We don't get it from the chief. We get reports about a broken pipe from the manager, not from the chief or not from Mr. Pena. I mean, everything runs through the manager. So what we're doing here is shifting the role to, but I mean, that's the way I see it. And again, I'm going to take it back, I'm going to take it back. I was sitting here in this commission when the manager briefly left the city. And at that time, Mr. Pena applied for the position, Felix applied for the position. And I personally told Mr. Pena, I told Mr. Felix at the time, with all due respect, I said, I don't think you're qualified. Therefore, you know, I didn't vote for them at that time. Since then, many years have passed, as a matter of fact, when he was appointed to be the zoning director, you know, I really admire George Cooley, I learned a lot from Mr. George Cooley. And I, again, told him, I don't, I don't think that you're there yet. Once again, Mr. Pena proved me wrong. So I have that history, that he has proved me wrong, where I thought that I was right. So that's why I don't hesitate. The only issue that we have is very simple, it's money. You know, and I joke with him, when he comes over here and he asks for money, I say, how much money, I mean, come on, you know, you keep asking for money. Because this broke and that broke and that broke and that broke, and I understand. So the only thing that I will say, Mr. Pena, the same way Madam Manager is very, very careful with our money, Mr. Pena has to be very careful with his money, with our money. So, and we, as a commission, we can hold accountable for that. So, I mean, those are my thoughts. We haven't heard from Commissioner Blanas yet.
Then we need to get Mr. Penner another hat.
Is that good or bad?
A big hat. No, you know, I, I think that Mr. Penner is more than qualified. I don't think that anyone understands the machinations of this city. You know, the wheels and the scogs, you know, I mean, no one else understands how this city runs more than him. That's a fact. So as far as having the city run, you know, where every player is in their position, Mr. Penner is, he's it, he's been doing it all along. Now, in the management position, you know, where he would have to handle, you know, employee, you know, situations and this type of thing, I think he's more than qualified also. If there is any one that he has to meet with as a manager, and then as a, as a director of the Public Works, I think that this type of meetings will lead to that matter coming to us, to begin with. You know, I don't see, you know, where he would make, you know, the decision, you know, about any project or about any decision that's gonna happen in the city, you know, by himself. That's gotta come to us. So, you know, I can see Commissioner Rodriguez's point, I can understand, Mr. Mayor, your point. I, you know, I concur with the city manager, I think that it will, it will run well. You just gotta keep a close eye on him, that's all.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the attorney one question?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Attorney, is there any, anything wrong legally with one person being in charge of every department of the city?
Well, let me tell you, I've just asked that question today. I had not been posed with that question before. I haven't seen anything except code enforcement officer that would be considered a dual position. So I would have to, if you approve that tonight, I would bring it back to you, and he again made the determination that he wants. But, as I say, this is gonna be an interim thing, I mean, this is not gonna be a permanent thing. At least that I, that's my understanding.
Thank you.
And again, Commissioner Rodriguez, I understand your position, because I just said on the record today that I had the same concern some years back with Mr. Penner.
I think that was before my time, I don't remember being up here.
Yeah, that was before your time, and he proved-
I know, I'm young.
No, I'm saying, because-
He was very young.
I don't remember this, it had to be before my, before my being up here.
Believe it or not, that's almost 20 years ago.
No, 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 when-
Eighteen.
When he, what? It was that long ago?
Mm-hmm, 2000.
Wow, that was before my time up here, okay, go ahead.
Okay. I'll give you another example, something that nobody has talked over here tonight, but it's very common in other cities. They wanna do this search, and they wanna go out and look outside. Okay, we're talking about an interim position, and who can you bring from the outside, do you think? I mean, that's gonna create total chaos, because all of a sudden, a manager by, well, we know this manager. What was that, what was number five, four, control?
Control.
Control, right? So, a manager that comes over here and wants to control, so, and then, you know, it's gonna work with people that have never worked before. Mr. Penner has worked with everybody here before, you know. Good or bad, but, you know, he, I'm sure that not everybody likes him, and he doesn't like everybody.
I love him.
But, 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 you love him.
He's doing a good job. He's doing a good job.
Well, he's saying a lot about you tonight, Mr. Penner.
So, so anyway, listen, I think we, I don't know. Unless we have any further discussion, I think-
What was this thing about control?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, you said something about-
The qualities of a manager.
Oh, define managerial functions.
Yeah, yeah, so an outsider, an outsider, you know, for, you know, it will come in and will like to control, and, and there's so much, there's such a learning curve.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There is no way, no way in the world that we are gonna go out and search and find someone with the qualities, with the qualification, to come in and just do the job for six months. They're not gonna do it, they're not gonna accept it, you know, because it's just such a short period of time.
You'll be surprised, people will accept it.
But then, there's the learning curve, you know, I mean, you know, they come in and they're cold, they don't know anything. You know, they have, by the time they leave is when they've learned everything that they need to know to do, to perform the functions, you know. I mean, you know, I think it's just, it goes without saying that, that, you know, we need to put someone in that position from within, that already understands how this city runs. There's no way, no way in the world that we can bring in someone from the outside. I would be, you know, against that, 110%.
That's normally what other people do, I mean, we don't do it here, but we have done it. Madam Manager?
Yes, clearly, I see that there is support for this nomination for Juan. And I wanna tell you that I cannot think of a better person to fill in my shoes while I'm gone for that period of time than Juan. Juan and I fight, we have lunch together, I love him dearly, he loves me dearly. We've worked together for 35 years, this is like a family. So I have absolutely no hesitation, and as we have discussed previously in individual meetings, he's the person that first comes to mind. I believe that the city is in great hands with Juan. The same happened when Juan retired, and he had to be out for six months. We had our, his back. It was Anari, it was me, and it was Luli, and it was all of us, basically filling in his shoes. But he was, he was a volunteer at that time, we had contact with him, we had access to him. He came by the city often. So I expect that that would be the same relationship that we're able to maintain. And we keep it in-house, nothing happens, and we move on.
Does it?
And if you're ready to vote on it, like I said, Mr. Mayor, I, without any hesitation, I encourage you to ratify the appointment of Juan Penner, so that we can make him the acting city manager during my time away.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we had a motion on the table, yes.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Because I want you to remember that the Miami Day College, Dr. Eduardo Padron, about three or four years ago, he did that. He stood, took down for six months, and then he came back to his position, because the people in the college, in the boards, they like him, they need him, they know he was, he was ready to keep working. And that happened before, it's nothing new. So, if you don't need more discussion, I keep saying my motion to approve the recommendation of the manager.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Okay. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Rodriguez, as you vote.
Mr. Penner, you want this job, sir?
I'm just minding the store.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Can you speak in the loud, please, don't be afraid.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Right, I can hear you.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca, how do you vote? Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Perfect, perfect.
One request, Mr. Mayor. Can I get my office fixed by the time I come back? I'd never ask for anything.
Well, Public Works is sitting in there, he should be able to get that done.
I, I forgot to mention one thing, I forgot to mention one thing. All of us, this goes to all of us, because we're human. Please, keep in mind that Mr. Penner is not the city manager yet. Until that time happens, our city manager is Yolanda Aguilar, okay? So-
No, he may die before July 31st.
No, 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 no. Well, we have to make another motion then.
Mr. Penner, there was a lot said about you tonight.
We, we love you. Next, next item, please.
Item 11J, recommendation by the Office of the City Manager, appointing an acting finance director for the period of time commencing July 31st, 2018 through January 31st, 2019, by City Manager Yolanda Aguilar.
Should you read the resolution?
Yeah, go ahead.
Resolution, item K, resolution of the Mayor on City Commission of the City of West Miami, accepting the recommendation nomination by the Office of the City Manager to appoint Rita Rodriguez as the acting finance director for a period of time commencing July 31st, 2018 through January 31st, 2019, Mayor and City Commission.
Okay.
The, yeah, the same concept applies here.
Second.
Okay, no discussion, so nobody's concerned that, we're talking about, this is-
If I may clarify, Mr. Mayor, before you bring it to a vote, Mercedes Leon dropped-
For clarity, for the, for the audience.
For the purpose of transparency.
Yes.
The day that I signed up for my drop application, Mercedes joined me in filing for her drop applications. Five years has almost gone by, and Mercedes leaves the same day I do pursuant to our state pension system. She leaves on July 30th. Her intention is to continue, to return to the city, she's been invited to return by me after the six months on the very same day, February 1st. And she is committed, as I am, to volunteer with the city, okay? But we cannot assume the official title. Therefore, we have to, for the purpose of signing checks, preparing audit statements, and other matters pertaining to the finance, we have to have an acting finance director until such time Mercedes returns. If you approve this this evening, we can move along those lines and then administer these oaths of offices in the coming months. Then we can get closer to that target date and administer the oaths, and make the arrangements to go to the banks and change the signatory accounts, which is another matter that I have to bring for the commission. So hopefully, you, everybody understands that there is a mechanism that takes place with all these changes.
And it takes time, so that's why I wanted to bring it forward as soon as possible.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, correct.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we have a motion by Commissioner Suarez, and I need, what was the second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blanes.
Commissioner Blanes.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez, as you vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez, as you vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca?
Yes.
Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes.
Thank you. Next item.
Item L, report by Chief of Police in reference to vehicle involved in an accident and recommendation to purchase a replacement vehicle.
Can you read the resolution, please, also, as well?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item 11M, resolution of the Mayor on City Commission of the City of West Miami, authorizing the city manager to purchase administrative police vehicle Ford Taurus 2018 for West Miami Police Department as replacement vehicle in the amount of $22,298, plus emergency equipment purchase and installation fee of $1,113.99, and providing for payment from the insurance company of $10,620 for a remaining balance of $12,791 to be funded from police impact fees, providing for purchase agreement between the City of West Miami and Barto Ford, providing for effective date, Mayor and City Commission.
Thank you. Dr. Chief?
Good evening. Again, we were fortunate that Detective Paz was injured, someone ran a stop sign and totaled the car that he was driving at the time, which was Captain Delgado's. We've gotten the amount that clerk read of a little over $10,000, and the difference from the insurance company, and the difference which will be requesting to take out of impact fees is $12,791 in order to purchase this car. We already have one on standby, to be ready to go as soon as we obtain your approval.
Okay.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, can you call the vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Blanes, as you vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez, as you vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Suarez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blanca? Mayor Mujina?
Yes.
Five, zero, item passes.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Item N.
N, nomination of members to the Code Enforcement Board, and it's Commissioner Rodriguez's turn to nominate a member to the board to replace a filling vacancy created by the resignation of one, of Member Mitchell Suria Rain, who moved out of the city.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna ask if we could defer this, so I have the time to, to find a qualified person.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, item deferred. Go to the order.
I have something.
Yes.
And this was not discussed when we were discussing the appointment of Mr. Penner? But I think that compensation should reflect the responsibility. So I think that maybe at a future commission meeting, we should have an item to discuss, you know, additional compensation for Mr. Penner, since he is going to have, you know, since he's gonna be tasked with the responsibility of running the city for six months. So I think that you will all agree that we will have to do something to that matter.
Yes, and I know that we're looking kind of along the same lines. I don't know whether I discussed it with you, but I did discuss it with the mayor, I believe, and a couple of commissioners during our meetings, that following the process of the appointment, obviously, the oath of office comes, and obviously, there will be a recommendation on, from, coming from our office on what we believe would be adequate to, for them to commensurate with their additional duties and responsibility for the period of time in question. So you will get a memorandum from, from our office, making some recommendations, and at least it gives you some, some guidance for the approval process, but-
Thank you.
Yes, I agree with you.
What color do you want that new hat to be, sir?
Red.
Okay.
Make your choices beforehand.
Commissioner Blanes, point well taken, I'm sure the manager will remind us and revisit that.
Mr. Mayor, and not leather, it's too expensive. You can get plastic, or, okay, just making sure.
We gotta, we gotta, we gotta train Rita now. Anyway, um-
One of the things that the commission should consider as well is that the city commission is going to save the salary of the city manager. So you're not really expending that much to compensate Mr. Penner. So you don't have to say that it's going to affect the bottom line. In fact, in fact, it's gonna be six months without paying the substantial amount that the manager makes.
Yeah, but I will hate to take that salary back from Mr. Penner later on, so, anyway.
We'll bring you some recommendations, and we've, I've discussed, discussed it already with Mr. Penner and with Mrs. Leon and Rita, and so we also have to entertain the chief code enforcement officer. So all of this has a domino effect. So please understand that we are working diligently to meet all the deadlines and to move along with this, and make it a flawless transition for the time in question.
Okay, anything else, or they go to the order? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.